The next item on the agenda is D4, a public hearing to consider the request of the City of Granbury for a comprehensive plan amendment from low-density residential to high-density residential, and zoning change from our 8.4 single-family residential to multifamily residential located at 1300 South Meadows Drive. Cody?
Yes ma'am, this is located at 1300 North Meadow Drive, as I was corrected earlier. The property is not currently platted and the purpose is to allow for multiple-family zoning for future development at an unknown date. The current zoning is single-family residential 8.4 and the proposed is multiple-family. The future land use is low-density residential and the proposed is high-density residential. And from the 2016 comprehensive plan, this was identified as low-density residential, and this outlines what the high-density residential definition is. And per the zoning ordinance, the Planning and Zoning Commission shall consider the following factors: the proposal would be consistent with the existing zoning surrounding the property; whether the proposed change is in accord; since the surrounding area is already developed, there is infrastructure in place and would need to be connected upon site development, additional residential units could create a demand for the schools in the area. This proposal would increase the amount of multiple-family zoned land, and this proposal is similar to a current proposal. This proposal would accommodate new multiple-family residential units, increasing the available number of units in the area. And six and seven for y'all. On July 2nd, city staff mailed out 10 public notices to all property owners within 200 feet and on the municipal tax roll within 200 feet of the subject property. Notice on June 28th was also published in the Hood County News as required by state law and the zoning ordinance. As of this writing, zero letters have been received and in favor, and two letters have been received in opposition. Staff recommends approval of the future land use amendment, and staff also recommends approval of the request to rezone from single-family 8.4 residential to multiple-family residential. And the voting options for tonight: recommend approval of the comprehensive plan amendment, recommend denial of the comprehensive plan amendment, and recommend approval of the zoning change or recommend denial of the zoning change.
Thank you Cody.
I think you turned your microphone off. Your microphone's off.
Thank you Cody. Are you answering questions or the city manager's gonna come up on behalf of the applicant? Okay?
Y'all had a wide variety of things to consider tonight, and as you were mentioned, you can drive around and see the subdivisions all along our community, and it's just, our community development department is being snowballed with projects, and it's coming in a rapid rate. Council asked me to ask to have this property run by the Planning and Zoning Commission for them to consider to rezone it. It's a little unusual for the city to get involved in a zoning request. I did reach out to the property owner, and he was very happy that that was a question to zone that property, his property into multifamily. His neighboring lot next to it is a 10-acre tract as well that's already zoned for multifamily. And so that leaves a 10-acre tract between the currently zoned multifamily and the school Right now, it's an 8.4 residential. But we've got a project working with a tax credit house for senior citizens, 55-plus community, the same people we dealt with on the other two tax credit projects that we've done since I've been here. And because of the timeline is so sensitive, we felt the need to move forward as a city to request this zoning change instead of the applicant. There's not a for-sure deal yet. We have scored preliminary, very high on the chart, to acquire this project. They award one project in the 16-county area, and it would really be a home run for the community to be able to land another one of these tax credit projects in the recent five years. So, you know, the one on Hill Court was developed, it turned out very nice. The one, I don't remember the street name, but if you'd go to Park and turn left, there's another one that was put in that turned out very nice. They're proposing quadplex housing, single-family, about 52 units on a little over five acres of this 10-acre tract that would be in the tax credit program. At a future date, they intend to possibly do market-rate housing on the remainder of that property, but that's not in the plan yet. And again, this is an application before Texas Department of Community Housing and Affairs, and they are gonna score this in September, and this needs to be zoned appropriately for their application by then. So, we brought this to you tonight for your consideration. It would, I asked her about the exterior, it would be masonry, hardy board, and some of the brick look that's on the Hill Court apartments. I don't know what you call that rock, but it's a, I call it a sticky rock. It's kind of layered and doesn't look like it has mortar, and it's very attractive. So, it is a low-density multifamily, if you think about it, 52 units on five acres. So, not bad at all, it'd be a nice community for me when I retire and can't afford to pay my taxes anymore, so, it's kind of where I'm at. Y'all have any questions?
So, what part of the lot is this first phase that's talking?
Right.
Is it the front part that fronts Meadows, or the back part?
Front.
The front?
The way I understand it. I haven't seen the sketch of it or anything, it's just, they said it would make more sense to develop the front first, from a cost point.
So, if you don't get the project...
It would just be zoned multifamily for somebody else to come along and probably do something different.
Right.
I want to make sure you understand that. It's not a done deal.
But the zoning will be done?
Right.
Will be permanent for it?
It'll be a multifamily.
Regardless of whether you get the project?
Yes ma'am.
You mentioned this is over 55.
That's what the current project is looking to do, a 55-plus community. Now, just to be transparent, on that 10 acres right next door, you're gonna be looking at a plat on it before long at all. So, there's another company that's looking to put, I haven't seen the sketch of what they're planning to put there, but there's an apartment complex going in right next door. At some point in the near future, you'll see that.
I have a question, I just had a comment that, I don't know if a lot of people know, but there are huge waiting lists for these tax credit apartments in town, and working in the fire EMS like I have, I run across an enormous amount of elderly people living in their cars. They have nowhere to go, so I applaud the city for getting out in front of this, because just the other day, I ran into a lady that was elderly living in her car, and she didn't know where to go, and I tried to send her to Hill, but I think Hill Boulevard maybe even has a waiting list. And it's a beautiful facility, I've been in there many times.
And Hill Boulevard actually is a blend of market rate plus tax credit, as this project will be, all 52 units will be eligible for tax credit. I just want to say that on behalf of all the planning that's gone in, comprehensive plan that y'all have talked about tonight, and all the growth that's happening, and the houses are starting in a price range of 300, 350 really, to $400,000. And there's not a place for a person that goes to work for the city to live. And a teacher could afford to live in this house, in this apartments that they're talking about, if they were over 55. But, so they're limiting it to the 55-plus, for whatever reason, I don't know, but that's the application that they've put together. I think it scores better at the, for the grant to be awarded, if it's 55-plus, to be honest with you, I don't know, but I think that's why they're doing it. And she told me she feels very confident we're gonna win this award, but it could fall through, you know, who knows? I don't want to promise something that's not done by our agency, so.
Well, I hope you do, because there's a huge, huge need, and I think a lot of people in the community don't really know how many of our elderly citizens are literally living in cars, and some even homeless right now.
So, you know, a two-bedroom apartment is about $1,600 in town, and I don't know if y'all have seen that, but it's hard to find a place to live that you can afford. And if you're in that lower-income bracket, I would say a family of two or three living in a two-bedroom house, they're gonna qualify for a discount if they're $60,000 household income or less. So, they would, it's a sliding rate, that's a whole nother conversation. But in reality, this is a zoning change request, it's not a project approval for this tax credit thing, it's a zoning. We're trying to set the table there for this to happen, if it does, and if it doesn't, we anticipate it's gonna be apartments anyway, so, at some point.
Any other questions for the applicant or staff? Well, which was also city? No? Okay, thank you, Mr. Kaufman. We have three speakers cards tonight. The first speaker is Lou James. If you'd come to the podium and state your name and address, please sir.
Thank you, I'm Lou James, I live at 407 Council Alley, and I am an elder with our Savior Lutheran Church, which is nearby. Having heard Mr. Kaufman's explanation, I think I have a better idea of what's going on. So, what I don't understand is if the timing's that important, why they can't get a plan together to present you, the previous applicant had all the plan, so he can show you what he's gonna do. What Mr. Kaufman keeps saying is it could fall through, it could fall through. Says financial impact not applicable, okay? If the zoning is changed, I think there will be a financial impact, and I think that can be calculated. I don't know anything about that, I just know that from what I've read, when zoning requirements are lessened, property value tends to increase. So that, once this is passed, the property value will be increased regardless of what happens in the future. So, I don't understand why, again, if it's, if time is that important, why they're coming to you for a zoning change first, instead of getting the plans together to offer you some guarantee of what you're voting for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. James. The next speaker tonight is Hayden LaMester.
I just wanted to say that I'm here on behalf of my dad, so he's, just to get into it, I've got a letter from him, I'm just gonna read off.
Could you state your address, please, for?
Sure, yeah. Hayden LaMester, sorry, I live in Bedford, Texas. I'm a managing partner representing LaMester Holdings LLC, which owns the property across the street from the subject property. Our holdings include 84 elderly multifamily units located at 1301, 1314, 1315, 1251, and 1225 North Meadow Drive. My father, Anthony LaMester, developed and built these properties between 1996 and 2004. We understand that several steps will precede the development of the subject property, however, we wish to express our concerns from the outset. Our primary concern regarding the proposed change from low-density single-family to high-density multifamily zoning is the water flow from, in the wa, sorry, is the water flow from the watershed. The watershed originates to the northwest near Peluxi Highway, and exits at the southwest corner of the underdeveloped portion on the west side of North Meadows Drive. During the development of our property, the City of Granbury required my father to commission a drainage study for the subject property to assess the volume and path of water flowing toward North Meadow Drive, and its discharge to the lake. The study was conducted by J.B. Davies Engineering of Fort Worth, and although we no longer possess a copy of the study, my father recalled that it was, at the time, it raised concerns about future development on the subject property. We have witnessed and been informed of a significant, of significant water flow traveling down North Meadows Drive, Meadow Drive, sorry. A few years ago, our property manager reported an incident in which a vehicle was swept off the road, across the sidewalk, and landed on the grass in front of an apartment at 1301 North Meadows Drive. We believe strongly that developing the subject property as high-density multifamily housing might exacerbate such occurrences. In addition, in addition to drainage concerns, we are also worried about the traffic impact and limited access from North Meadow Drive to Highway 144. However, drainage remains our foremost concern. While we are not opposed to rezoning in principle, we cannot support it without additional information on how the proposed changes will affect our property. We recognize that rezoning is the first step in the broader development process, but if a fundamental problem exists that cannot be mitigated, it must be identified from the beginning rather than later. For the reasons I have stated, we cannot support rezoning or development of the subject property until potential for increased watershed affecting our property is also thoroughly investigated. I wish I could answer questions just ahead of time, but I really here, because my dad's currently in Colorado, got the notice a little late, or, rather, he wasn't able to make it, I wish he could, but I just wanted to say his piece for him, so.
Thank you Hayden. Any questions for the speaker? Okay. The next speaker is David Hewitt.
I'm David Hewitt, I live in Mallard Point, representing our Savior Lutheran Church, which is at the corner, which is 1440 Meadows, which is at the corner of Misty Meadows and Meadows. Misty Meadows and Meadows, yes. Our concern, I'm the congregation president for the church, and also have the head of the trustees with me here today. We are also very concerned about drainage. We have current problems with drainage. The infrastructure does not handle the water well now. The flooding, based on fairly minor rainfall at the corner of Misty Meadows and Meadows, is over the curbs. And it also then does not flow out and backs up into our property. We've owned that property and been there for 20-plus years, except during the construction phase, we have operated the church all that time. It wasn't until the last four or five years that we've experienced a lot of water drainage problems. And we spent a lot of money to mitigate whatever we can on the property to allow the water to drain better, and to even scoped the, all the drains to make sure nothing was clogging them up or keeping them from draining properly, and founded all those things were in great working order. We've done other things like put some pumps in, we've put a new gutters and wider and bigger downspouts and everything else to help flow the water away, but when it doesn't, when it gets to the street and doesn't go anywhere, it backs up. So, our fellows, who are a good group of guys, are always, every time it rains, we're all up wanting to know if it's gonna flood and come into the church again, and it does nearly every time, to some extent. So, that's a problem. And when we have that problem now, and we start to build a property that's gonna have drainage off-site, which it will be, and we've heard that discussed earlier, that's a concern for us. And we know that that water coming down that street is going to be going and emptying and going off to the lake in the same place. So, it's gonna only make it worse than it is now. And we don't see any change or any assistance in alleviating that problem at the corner by the schools. So, that's my, that's our first concern, we're very concerned about drainage, because we constantly have problems every time we get much rain. And I'm not talking curville rain, I'm talking an inch or two rain in a short period of time, you know, overnight can create problems. Our second concern is traffic and neighborhood safety. We have two GIST schools right there, as you know, Bronner and Emma Robertson, and we have a preschool which we run at our church, so they're all right there together. GIST has a significant problem with traffic and safety of bringing their kids and dropping them off and taking them, picking them up in the afternoon. That also includes our school, which we have the same problem. A few years ago, I approached the GIST about buying some property at the west side of our property, because they needed more parking in their parking lot. And at the time, Jeremy Glenn was the superintendent of schools, and he came back to me and he said, "We would really like to buy a strip of land where we can put a road in to help alleviate the traffic congestion, because we are very concerned about the safety and the, the amount of traffic on the roads right in that area." And so we sold them, the strip of land, which you will see on that, you saw on that map, it's exaggerated on that map, because it's not as wide as that looks like. It's 60 feet wide, and it's big enough to have a sidewalk and fences and paved and curbs and gutters in the road, and a nice-looking road. That will be able to be used for different directions depending on the flow of traffic going home, coming, coming in, and so on. But Bronner has a similar problem, they're backed up all the way to quick, what's the gas station down on the corner there at 144? They're backed up all the way down there. The problem is, we've had a couple of kids get hit out there, because traffic is so bad, and people don't always want to go slow, they want to go fast, because they're all trying to get to work. They come into our parking lot at our church and park there, because they don't want to get in line, because it takes too long, and they walk their kids across and go through the traffic. And we, that's where we've had a couple of young children get hit. So, we know at least two of those incidences that are caused by excessive traffic in that area. We believe that the high-density potential of this property right next door will create more issues. It's really difficult now for people to get out onto Meadows and Misty Meadows if there's, if this is drop-off and pick-up time, which are basically two times of the day, obviously. But it's really a problem, and you'd really kind of have to sit there and realize what the issues are. This would only bring more traffic to the area, it can't lessen the traffic. I have a question here that I heard, and I was pleased to hear city manager mention this plan, which I had heard about from, because I was called by the people who own the property now, thinking that we were adjacent, and I told them that we weren't adjacent any longer, because we'd sold this 60-foot strip of land to the, to the GIST. But I'm very happy to hear this plan, because that was what I was told too. But my question, I guess, with you would be, why would we need high-density if, that sounds like that's medium-density? If that's what we're looking at putting in there, and that's what they're talking about putting in there, why would we have to go to high-density? Because as you say, that is not a guaranteed deal, and if they can't put it together, then all of a sudden, now we have to deal with high-density and the drainage, more drainage problems, and more traffic issues than with the lower-density or medium-density that are potentially could, could be zoned for. That's about all I have, that's enough. Any questions for me?
Cody, could you address if his, if this project could fall under medium?
Fall under what?
Under medium?
I'm not sure of that definition, I had only mentioned, Cody had mentioned that there's, there is something in between, high and low. I don't know if it, that was 55 units? That was everything?
Fifty-two units.
Fifty-two?
But it's multifamily, so.
Right, multifamily, but medium-density would include some multifamily, would it not?
So, it'd be, it'd be dependent on the definition, I do not recall what the definition is for the comprehensive plan, but medium-density residential versus high-density residential, there could be an issue with it corresponding to the multiple-family residential zoning, which, if the multiple-family residential zoning requires the high-density, it would have to be the high-density on the future land use, let me clarify that.
I would think that it's probably zoned, would it not be, same as the property across the street? That's probably the same zoning that we're talking about. Do you know the definition?
So, multifamily is multifamily. And then you got low-density residential, which is large lots, medium-density, which are smaller lots. We don't have a medium-density multifamily.
So, are there, are there fourplexes, is that what you said?
Yes ma'am.
So, could they not fall under like more, something more like a townhome type thing? Zoning?
Not by our definition, no ma'am.
Say again Cody?
Not by our definition of, in the zoning ordinance, no ma'am.
Okay.
I mean, if it were townhomes, it'd be great too, so, you know, but that's not what we've got, those are quadplexes. So, typically, townhome is, you know, wall-to-wall, eight units or more, and multi-story. That's just what we need, to change the zoning. I'd be happy to work with you on drainage issues, I had no idea y'all had drainage problems. I've been here 10 years, hadn't heard about it yet, so come see me.
Okay, we'd be happy to, we'd be happy to, won't we?
We want to work with you.
The, obviously then, I hear that, and if it's multifamily, it's gonna, gotta be high-density, so there's not really an option there. And I, and obviously, that would be a better benefit, it still doesn't eliminate all the drainage issues, but it would make it easier if that project would work. But high-density, particularly even up the street, which sounds like it's coming pretty soon, those two high-density, now we've got the other one that's across the street, all that water's gonna go to the same place. You know, it's, there's some major, major construction, the major projects that are gonna create some big problems at that short, very small area right there. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you, Mr. Hewitt.
May I ask a question?
Sure, you can, we approach the, our, your, this was Mr.?
James.
James.
Lou James, I was just wondering about a planned development, is that an option? Rather than just a straight high-density zoning, could it be a planned development with restrictions placed on it, which would allow the senior living facility, but not allow just whatever in the future? That's what I was wondering. Thank you.
As Mr. Kaufman spoke to earlier, there is a timeframe that this would have to be done, and with a planned development, you would have to have site plans and everything presented and approved at that point. However, with the multifamily zoning, they do have to have an approved site plan, so they would have to come back to P&amp;Z with an approved site plan before they could pull any kind of permits or COs for the property. And they would have to plot the property as well. So, with all that being said, they're going to have engineering that's gonna go and be reviewed by our outsourced civil engineers prior to building, as well as a site plan approval that'll come to P&amp;Z for recommendations prior to approval of permits.
Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, I'd just like to add that we just went through a legislative session in Austin, and they're trying to figure out ways to increase density in our community, whether we like it or not. And, for instance, they had a bill, it didn't pass, thank goodness, but it was gonna allow 31 residential, single-family homes per acre. And so, that's a scary thought, and I've got pictures in my office of subdivisions that meet that criteria. We don't want our zoning to be changed that way. We are very sensitive to construction drainage and ensuring the fire code is met on every project that we do. I don't know how they built a church that floods 23 years ago and, and didn't have to address drainage that was gonna affect them, whether they developed them around or what, it should have been addressed back then, so we're gonna look at their needs, for sure. But if their church is flooding with a two-inch rain, we need to know about it, and we need to see what we can do to get that water to drain. Now then, the state law protects them from any development moving forward that would cause them any additional flooding problems. So, our hydrologist team that works with Cobb Finley will be addressing those issues as well. So, I don't want to flood anybody, and we're gonna protect our existing homes and our existing businesses with whatever gets developed, whether it's this project or another one, or the 191 luxury apartments that they're talking about with amenities they didn't cover with y'all, but there, there's a need for what we're talking about doing, and repairing what's obviously messed up, we probably need to look at that as we look at the street project in your neighborhood as well. But I just want to say that we are being mandated to make housing affordable as a city. There's a, there's a moral push from Austin making us do this, and whenever you, when our code requires someone to put together a complete set of plans with architectural renderings like the first gentleman did so eloquently from Allen, Texas, I bet they've spent a quarter million dollars so far on that project, and that just adds to the overall cost of a project, and you don't even know you're gonna win the project at this point. So, we're trying to keep the cost affordable and, and work through that project. So, you know, if it, I feel confident it's gonna happen, but I can't give you 100%, you know, it's probably a 95%. Yes, we win if we get the zoning, and 95% that we don't, so. But I just want you to know that, to come up here with, in fact, we're doing the zoning, the city is, not the applicant, because our code was gonna require them to do all that, and that just adds to the cost of the housing. And so, we're trying to make it affordable, we're trying to show good faith with our legislature, our state senator that lives here, they actually talking about bills that... They're actually talking about bills that mandate secondary homes on everybody's lot in town, no matter how big it is. They can go out there and build another house in their backyard and sell it or rent it or whatever they want to do. So, that's the direction the legislature's headed, and then I read the state plan on housing, and the reason why the legislature's acting that way is because Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs put together this housing master plan for the state, and that's what they're pushing. And so, I don't necessarily agree with everything they're saying, but I do know that a house that costs $350,000 to $400,000 is hard to attain for a schoolteacher, or police officer, a utility worker, people that are in my world that we hire, it's hard to get there. And so, we need some kind of housing for our folks, and there's more economic development things coming as far as housing needs because of jobs being created and the things that are happening on the radar that I can't talk about yet, but they're real close, businesses coming to town, creating jobs, and they've gotta have a place for workers. So, I'm sympathetic to what everybody's saying against it. The city council asked me to come and present this to y'all, and so here we are, and we'll go from there. Thank you. Have any questions, I'll try to answer.
I can attest to your quote on those figures for the drawings. I'm working on a project in Cleburne right now for a church, and the civil MEP and architectural drawings were a quarter of a million dollars, and that was for one building. So, yeah, to be able to get all that drawn up, and then it may not happen or not, that's a big financial risk that the taxpayers are gonna take.
Thank you.